Waters.
Here.
Gretkin?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Shaner?
Here.
Scott?
Here. Be stand for a moment, a silent prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Interview for the Human Rights Commission, Abigail Cortez. Abigail here. Please come up and state, tell us a little bit why you want to serve and a little bit about yourself, if you would.
Hello, greetings. My name is Abigail Cortez. I have been a citizen of Sioux City for about fourteen-plus years, and I'm looking for the opportunity to join the Human Rights Commission. I would like to serve the city that I've lived in for this time, and I feel that Sioux City has a lot of things, a lot of good things that it provides as citizens, and I just want to be a part of the commission, you know, just to ensure that we continue.
You work for Iowa State?
Correct.
Appreciate you making the application. Just out of curiosity, I'm gonna steal this question from a colleague, Dan usually asks this. Where did you hear about this opportunity, or who asked you to apply, or encouraged you?
Nobody in particular. I was just, it's been something that I've been wanting to do for a few years now. I just feel more confident that I'm able to bring more to the table. So, I just went on to the city website and I applied, and here I am.
Good for you.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for doing so.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. We'll let you know, okay?
Thank you.
Have a good day. Okay, we'll go to the consent agenda, which is three through sixteen M today. Consider it to pass unanimously unless a separate call votes requested by a council member. You can come up and speak on any agenda item as I read it. Be sure and state your name and address for the record so that we can use it later for reference. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Three is a reading of the minutes of August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, city. Four is a motion acknowledging the August twenty-fourth Board of Adjustment actions. Five is a resolution rescinding Resolution Number Two Zero Zero Nine-Dash-Zero-One-Three-O relating to the resolution supporting legal definition of marriage. I'm gonna abstain, and I'm not gonna apologize for abstaining because I wouldn't have voted for this if it were ever to have come up on the city council agenda. You can make statements, and that's not what city councils ought to be about. They ought to be about what helps a community, in my opinion, and when this was passed, it was not the right thing to do, in my opinion, and taking this action has no bearing whatsoever. First of all, it was a resolution which has no bearing. Second of all, the Supreme Court has ruled that this doesn't have any effect whatsoever, so I'm gonna abstain on the item. Six is a motion accepting the museum director annual evaluation. Bruce, you have anything to say?
No. Do you have any questions?
Pretty much Mr. Perfect Ken, isn't he?
Yeah.
He does a nice job, definitely.
Yes.
Does, yes.
And thank you all for the support you give to this museum. I think it's a destination place, and it's very, very well-run, so, thank you.
We agree.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Seven are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution approving an application to fund two housing family self-sufficiency coordinators with the Department of Housing and Urban Development. B is a resolution accepting a grant by HUD under the CDBG agreement. C is a resolution accepting the grant authorized by HUD under the Hope Investment Partnership Agreement. D is a resolution accepting the grant authorized by HUD under the Emergency Solutions Program Agreement. E is a resolution authorizing the police department to accept the state and community highway safety grant and impaired driving countermeasures grant. F is a resolution accepting the local housing trust fund program application by Iowa Finance Authority by the city, by Sioux City Housing Trust Fund. G is a resolution approving agreement between the Kent Convention and Visitor Bureau and the Iowa Economic Development Authority for a regional sports authority district grant. Eight are actions relating to street closures. A is a resolution temporarily closing a portion of West Nineteenth on September seventeenth for the West High Homecoming Parade. B is a resolution temporarily closing various streets in the Morningside area on September twenty-third for the East High Homecoming Parade. C is a resolution temporary closing portions of Grandview Boulevard and Thirteenth Street on September twenty-fourth for the Bishop Healan Homecoming Parade. D is a resolution temporary closing various alleys and streets in the downtown area September tenth through the twenty-seventh for the Downtown Partners Valley, Alley Art Festival. Nine are actions adopting construction documents. A is a resolution adopting plans and specifications for the Floyd Sanitary Sewer and Scepter Cleaning and Televising Project. Gord, you really didn't answer my question. I, it... If we're gonna have to continue to bypass this and to pump it to try to clean it, isn't the only solution, what we talked about a year ago, a lift store and a force main?
No, Gordon Fair, city engineer. No, that's not the reason for the bypassing. The bypassing is just so that we could see what the bottom of the pipe looks like, and there's too much flow at this point to be able to videotape it.
But you're going in and adopting plans and specs to clean it again, and we just put a whole bunch of new in there?
Oh, no, this is for downstream of that area, that newer, that, where that new pipe we just put in last-
They're bypassing way up above. They're bypassing north of the bridge. I saw them there-
Yes, that's where they're, that's where they're cleaning now. This is for another new project south of the area that we just installed.
My, if that's the case, that's what I ask you today. If that's the case, why are we by, why are we pumping up there?
Why are we pumping up there? So we can videotape that portion.
Said it was downstream. You got me totally confused, and I don't-
There's a current contract to do the, what's going on now. This is for a contract for another portion. They're two separate contracts.
That's specifically about that today, and it wasn't in relationship to this item. Okay, B is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the utility lining improvement project. C is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Tyson Event Center Water Softener Replacement Project. Ten are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution accepting the transit joint participation agreements with the IDOT for public transit services.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a comment to make. Mike, thanks for making this application for the grant. It certainly is, certainly, the impact will be, it'll enhance the transit system's operating budget, correct?
Correct. These are, these are capital items and operating items.
Yes, and that will allow us to emphasize our commitment that we've made to, to the affordable and accessible mobility-
Yes.
-regarding our residents. So, that, that's a big deal, so I'm glad you, you made that application for the grant. You've received it. I think it's gonna be, keep, keep doing things like that for our transit system because it really gives us a boost.
Yep, very good.
Yep, thank you, Mike.
B is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with DGR Engineering for the Northern Valley Crossing Stormwater Detention Project. C is a resolution granting a permit to FiberCom to maintain underground cable in the Sixth Street Corridor. D is a resolution granting a permit to Windstream Communications to maintain underground cable in the South Lakeport Street Corridor. E is a resolution ratifying, ratifying the Compromise Settlement Agreement by IMWCA and John Michael High. Eleven are actions relating to personnel. A is a resolution adding a water plant manager and reclassifying the water plant superintendent position to water plant manager in the Water and Utilities Department. B is a resolution reclassifying, reclassifying the position of part-time secretary to full-time administrative assistant in the Water and Utilities Department. C is a resolution eliminating, eliminating the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and one full-time lead operator position, and adding operations supervisor and plant manager positions at the wastewater treatment plant. D is a resolution adding a plant manager position in the Wastewater and Environmental Services Division. E is a resolution approving an updated job description for the wastewater treatment plant operations supervisor position. Twelve are actions authorizing payment. A is a resolution accepting the work and authorizing payment to Heber Construction for demolition of fifteen eighteen to twenty-two Douglas Street. B is a resolution approving a settlement of a tort claim. C is a resolution authorizing payment to WA Klinger for the Riverside Family Aquatic Center Pool House Renovation Project. D is a resolution approving change order number one and authorizing payment to Mark Albinicious for the Twenty-Ninth Street Inlet Repair Project. Thirteen are act, actions relating to property. A is a resolution scheduling, scheduling a hearing on Amendment Number Two to the amended and restated Donner Park Urban Renewal Plan, property at forty-eight oh one Houlihan Run. B is a resolution approving a corrective city deed for the vacated North-South Alley at fourteen oh one and fourteen oh seven Harris Street. The petitioner is Peggy Lau and John Chiaso, so. C is a resolution approving a corrective city deed for the vacated portion of fourteen forty-five Burton. The petitioner is Stephen L. Bigford and Javier Marquez Martinez. D is a motion directing staff to begin negotiations for the development of seventeen twenty Morningside Avenue. So exactly what you're looking for direction today, is that correct?
That is correct. Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. I have a few slides. Just, just provide some additional background and history, and also the proposals as presented by the two developers that are in the audience as well, and would like to say a few words on their project. This is the site in question, the former East Middle School Site, seventeen twenty Morningside Avenue. That's what it appeared as when we acquired the property from the school district back in two thousand twelve. We did a very similar request for proposals and ultimately accepted a proposal from another local developer, and we settled on this plan. Unfortunately, the, the Morningside Avenue portion, the top portion, was never completed, and so recently, we went back, worked with the developer, and that property was deeded back to us under the terms of the development agreement. So, the townhomes on the lower portion have been completed, and the portion up on top, the portion that we're discussing today. So earlier this year, we did submit another request for proposals after we received direction from council. The parcels, approximately forty-eight thousand three hundred square feet, and is zone NC five, which is residential. We were asking in the proposal that the projects consist of multifamily or single-family. The previous proposal had a mixture of single-family included. We stated it must be economical, attractive, durable, sustainable, and compatible with the existing neighborhood, and the design must include modern development with off-street parking and green space. As a result of that RFP, we did receive two complete proposals, AfterShock Ventures and Kaskovich and Murphy Developments. Just a brief summary on those two proposals. AfterShock, twenty-four multifamily units in two buildings, twelve two-bedroom units, twelve three-bedroom units. Off-street parking provided with garages and non-covered off-street stalls. Total project cost, just over three-point-two million dollars. The proposal within that agreement was a purchase price of one dollar with development agreement, and a construction timeline of twelve months. This is a conceptual site plan that was submitted with AfterShock. As you can see, the two buildings contain the twenty-four units, fourteen stall garage on the backside with some stormwater detention in this corner. This is a proposed rendering that's been provided to us by the developer of one of the two different buildings. Second proposal was from Kaskovich and Murphy Developments. Again, twenty-four multifamily units, two buildings. In this case, they've proposed to have all two-bedroom units ranging from six-hundred-and-fifteen square feet to nine-hundred-and-twenty-seven. Off-street parking would be provided with solar panel cover stalls, as well as a mixture of non-covered off-street stalls as well. Total project cost, just over three-point-eight million. Again, as with the other proposal, one dollar land purchase with development agreement, and as the other proposal, construction timeline is twelve months. This is a rendering of that proposal that was submitted. As you can see, there's a mixture of covered parking here, and then some open parking along the outsides. The different colors of the building represent the size of the units, so there's a yellow, and orange, and a red, and that corresponds with the square footage of those units. And here's another rendering looking from the opposite direction. Each proposal was reviewed. According to the request for proposal, the following was the criteria for the initial review. Conformance to the RFP, the organization presentation content, the content of the submittal, the experience, technical competence of the developer, the overall strategic planning method, and the knowledge and understanding of the local environment. This is just a quick review of that summary. Both proposals did conform to the specified RFP format and were submitted by the deadline. They were organized, project details were presented, included all the required content. They've both included their experience and technical competence, and staff believes that both developers are well-experienced and have the technical competence to complete a successful project at this site. They both provided a very similar timeframe of twelve months, and both developers have knowledge and understanding of the local environment, and staff believes that they have the necessary experience building in Sioux City, not just residential, but industrial and commercial. So with that, I'll open it up to questions. Again, both the developers are in the audience, and would like to say a few words as well.
And other than tax payment, which anybody can get, there's nothing else that we're giving as part of this project?
There's no incentives being provided, no incentives have been requested, and all the environmental work and the due diligence is at the responsibility of the developers as well.
Who wants to go first?
Paul Kaskovich, twenty-one oh six, Third Street. My partner Ben Murphy and I are here. We're excited about this project. We submitted this proposal back in April. We got an architect, engineer teed up, ready to go. We wanna get on this right away. Hopefully get some dirt worked on this fall, and then start working as soon as we get the plans finalized, get foundations in the ground. Our goal is to be done by August so that we can hopefully hit the college market. There's a strong need. We have another project across town that we're seeing a lot of college kids are ending up over there, hoping that this project would open, open doors for them. We kinda cater this project as the need that we're seeing is for single and two-bedroom apartments. Feel like we're gonna deliver a really solid product. There's a strong interest right now, strong workforce housing, fits that need, and we're excited about it.
And, you're, these are gonna be rental units in your case, correct? You're not-
That's correct. Well, Kaskovich and Murphy will own them, will run them. We have our own in-house management company that handles all of the other stuff that'll take care of it as well.
Paul, is this why the target obviously is the college students? Is that why your designs didn't go over a thousand square feet?
Exactly, yeah. Like I said, we're getting students from both Morningside and Empire Cliff that are actually living at forty-two right now, and just what we're seeing with what we're people that are coming to that apartment, and what we're getting, that's kinda why we designed this up. We based it off our pre, pre-rented list that had already come in.
What are you doing with the solar, just out of curiosity?
Our architect did put that in, kind of as an idea perhaps, to recoup some of the costs of energy factors and try to make it more green.
Well, Paul, you're always gonna get me on green projects, man, so I loved the addition of the solar panels, so thank your architect on that. I also really liked the rendering. I, I like the looks of your project probably more, but I did have a concern about the square footage, because six-hundred and whatever that was seems tight. Are you thinking then, that your, your angle is then it's closer to the size of a dorm, or obviously it would be a little larger than that, you'd be able to hit that market and reflect it in the price per month, price point? I mean, is that kind of the vision? I, I was, I'm leaning more towards a larger square foot, because I know we have a large need for that, but I trust your market research as well. If you can just expand a little bit on what you were saying to Julie.
Although we're not completely focused on the college student, I mean, that is kind of our niche. It's right across the street, right?
Yeah.
And seeing that that would be our customer, we felt that, based upon what we're hearing back for feedback, that that's a decent size. It's not set in stone by any means, and we can grow a little bit, kinda massage it, but we felt like, you know, for the student that just wants to live on their own, have a small spot that's also reasonable, you know, and for what they're doing, I thought it was a good size, but it's, can be worked with, I suppose.
Because that's, that was the only concern I had, was just that, because I was trying to envision six-hundred and some square feet, and thinking that seemed tight to me, but again, a very different mentality from what I know some of the students that I work with are looking forward to.
How big is the average dorm room?
I have no idea. I mean, I've been in them, obviously, but I don't know the square footage.
Dorm room?
And it's really small. It's basically an oversized bedroom, because you just have bunks in them and then a community bathroom.
I remember when my daughter had an apartment in Des Moines, she had an eight-hundred and some square foot, and I thought it was spacious, so.
Are there quite a few other that are around that square footage, like in the area in your, like, I don't know what forty-two has for square footage of normal, or any of the other ones for that matter?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we go all the way up from like six-fifty up to fourteen, like fourteen-eighty, I think, is what it was, you know, so.
Fourteen-eighty is the size of a house.
No, 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 no.
Or the, what you have in different stuff.
As far as the area, I can't really speak for the area, to be honest with you. There's really not much. You know, nothing, nothing that's gonna compare, you know, being new, modern, and-
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I totally agree. That was the only concern I had.
Question I have for both of you is, because my mother lives not very far away, and the neighbors and her sit on their front porches and talk, and drainage has always been kind of a problem here. And I wanna make sure you guys both have that under control, because I don't wanna get phone calls during construction that says, we don't, we got mud in our backyard, because it happens.
Drop off under those candles back there?
Yeah.
If you, if you know the history, before, they were almost gonna have to build walls, and you were gonna pull under and park underneath, so you would've maintained that dirt up above, but with these proposals, you're actually dropping it off, it looks like, right? Without walls.
I'll be honest, I didn't get DGR involved too heavily right away. They've worked on the project, I think, prior with a prior developer, but they're, they're well, well aware of the site and what needs going on.
I just wanna make sure.
Are both, are both sites gonna have a water retention area?
Both would be required.
Okay.
The other worry that I had would be for both of you again, and it was similar to what the mayor's was, was just about those neighbors. I, I actually almost bought one of those townhomes when I first moved back, and so I just wondered what your thoughts are as far as, I mean, I work at the college. I see what these students do and stuff, and rentals and stuff. I just worry about those neighbors and some of those feelings, if you wanted to share. I mean, will that be fencing and stuff? Do you have, have you thought of that part of it?
Haven't got that far yet, no. Again, with like Bob said, you know, that the elevation of this as opposed to those is much higher-
Yeah.
-setting up. I'm not really su, you know.
Yeah.
Speaking from a fence, I'm not sure what it'd be, but at the same point, if we end up putting a wall back there, ultimately, there's gonna be a fence right from a, from a liability standpoint hazard, so. I haven't got that far yet, but-
Yeah, and I think I would just urge either developer, whoever gets that, I think that's something I would really think about.
Because the way they changed the plan, this is dramatically different than what-
Can you pull it up for me?
Dominos proposed. It's an entirely different plan. You used to have a backstreet going in, like an alley going into those.
On the previous plan from two thousand twelve, they came in off of Orleans here.
And what I was thinking though is that almost acts as a buffer, because now go to what's proposed. You can just use Kaskovich, because we're up here. Now, the next thing would be, at least there is that green space, so there is that buffer. And, and I suppose the decks are kind of angled, not necessarily just going straight out at those properties. But that's what I was saying, is I was just concerned if I was, like, I was looking at that first or second unit, and if I would've bought that and went out on my back deck, am I gonna just listen to college kids on their deck all night? That's what I was just saying, I would just-
Yeah, you were.
I would just give some-
You were onto the other proposal, too.
Yeah, no, I agree. I'm not saying, I'm just saying I would think about the neighbors either way we go.
Okay.
And, and just strategically, where you're gonna put the decks and all that stuff, I'm sure you can, you guys can think of a creative way to do that, but.
That darker strip of green that runs the length of it, is that kind of depicting the elevation a little bit? Showing that, Jeff, where that drops off?
Or if that's just an outline, maybe?
Or that just a fake shade?
I can't say for certain.
Okay. I do know, realize that it is higher, quite a bit higher.
Okay, let's give the other developer a-
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
This gonna look a lot like the ones you've got now, Dan, it looks like?
Yes, very similar. Dan Heiser with AfterShock Ventures.
Yes, it's, it's, as Jeff had mentioned, both proposals are very similar with the number of units. Probably the history difference here is we started looking at this site probably three years ago, and started discussions with the staff about two and a half years ago in coming up with solutions for this site. You mentioned stormwater drainage. That's, that's a key issue, and that's probably what delayed us initially because there really is not, the proposal that Jeff had shown earlier, there is a piece of stormwater drainage on there that was not included, that the original developer should have added, and that would've added a storm drain up onto this parcel. So early in the process, visiting with Gordon some, we were trying to figure out, well, how do we tie the storm drainage into a, a main in some fashion, and it was gonna involve a lot of street tear-ups and working around, and fortunately, about a year ago then, I visited with the City Utilities Department, and we found that there is a main that runs in the alley, so then the project was more feasible that we could tie into. So with that being said, we did work with the neighbors, as you mentioned. I already met with them. It's been some time ago. Their request was that whatever we build, it front up to Morningside Avenue as far as possible to keep a, more of a buffer away. So our goal is to have it up within like ten foot of Morningside Avenue and give them more space in the rear so they don't have to worry about noise as much. We do plan on, and the property adjacent has just recently sold hands, the property to the north, and we need to bore underneath that property to tie into some storm drainage. So we've, we've spent considerable time. We also have, the architect plans have been completed, and we're ready to move forward as well.
You're gonna bore under that apartment house?
No, at the very end where the drive is. If you look at that, I don't know if you can see it on that plan or not. Yeah, it'd be right in that area, right off that corner. That's all parking right there. So we would go underneath that parking, and right on the corner of that parcel where you just had the mouse at, there is an inlet, right, over right, a little bit further, right in there. So that's where we would try to tie in at, provided that all the studies prove correct and stuff.
So you don't have it, have, have to have a detention pond?
No, no, we would. There'd be a detention pond still at that bottom corner.
Okay.
And then the overflow would tie into there, and of course, all the engineering has to be done, but we've just been working on the mechanics. How would you get this to work? Getting permission from the neighbors and visiting with them on it as well. And just coming up with a plan that, that would, that would work. So, you know, we've been on this for several years now. I went to Morningside College, grew up in Morningside. I'm a Morningside person.
Well, now I see what he's trying to do here.
Yep, now we're seeing what's happening.
Would love to have a shot at that.
Remember what I said about talking to those neighbors?
The neighbors are always good. Sometimes they get you in trouble, you know, it just raises more concerns on things, and it, but it's good to address them on the front side, so you know kinda what their concerns are, so. That's why ours front more towards the front, and are pulled up more that way, because they wanted more of that buffer. I think it's, it's a great project. We do have them a little larger. Our experience with the college group is they like to pair up. We see in our apartments more having a couple, two or three even, room together. So I think from a housing standpoint, you would address more housing by having the larger paces, spaces, and you would get more people. I think you'd have two or three college kids in the, in an apartment versus one, so I think it'd give you more of a dynamic that way, so. Any other questions you guys have on the site? It would be similar to our forty-eight south, except we're adding a brick fascia on the front to kinda tie it in more with the neighborhood, and an entry. We also probably, I like to put some columns and some black iron fence around it, give a little more formal look for that neighborhood, I think would fit also.
One question I have just more in general, and this is, I've been meaning to ask either of you when you come up, or anyone that's gonna be doing apartments, or talk to me about amenities. What do you guys offer in apartments? I, I've went to some of my friends in Omaha, and then most recently, Des Moines, and it's like, I see some of the amenities and different things they're incorporating into their apartment complexes. What, what do either of these offer? And I know this is a different project than what you might do differently.
Unfortunately, this site is small enough that I, you don't really have room for a lot of extra things. Would there be an exterior patio of some sort in a dog park area or something? Probably, we fit that in as you get going on the plans, but, you know, is there room for a pool? Is there, I mean, a lot of that stuff is, it's not sizable enough to be able to justify having a large facility to provide extra amenities to the area, so.
And I'm sure that's kind of similar feel, right? Yeah.
And you're doing rental, right, too?
Yes, they'd be rentals as well.
I don't know if it'd be appropriate, tell me if I'm wrong, but I'm just curious because we talk all the time about affordable housing. Do you have an idea what the rent would be? Do you?
And I don't know-
You don't have to tell me if you're not comfortable with it. I'm just hoping that these will be units that become affordable for kids to be able to move into. I want you to be successful, but-
Sure.
Is that a fair question, or is that not a fair question?
We're all kinda in the same, same, it's the same ballpark, probably, whichever way you go. Yeah, because we have the same cost basis, and it's, it's very common, so. What we're seeing now in the, like, two and three bedrooms, are anywhere between twelve to fourteen-hundred, roughly. And that's private use to be- Um, and that's private use to be as well, uh, which is unfortunate that, I mean, it'd be nice to get a cheaper price point, but unless you're in some type of a federal program of some sort.
Sure.
The, the, the economics just don't work out that way.
I understand. Thank you.
And that's what I struggle with. I was hoping maybe too, with a smaller square footage, I'm sure they might be able to lower that some, and so that's where I'm getting at, cause I do hear college students talk about, gosh, the amount that I have to pay for rent in Sioux City is the same or more than it is in other communities where they can make a hi- a higher wage, and that's really difficult for me to answer. You know what I mean? And to, to justify, and so I think about that a lot.
Well, and that's the benefit, if we have some three bedrooms, so we do have, um, in our current concept forty-eight south, we have quite a few three bedrooms with three college kids. So by the time you spit, split that fourteen hundred dollars up between three college kids, it's much more affordable, and it gets you down to a price point then that's, that's more workable to them.
Jeff, I have a question for you on, uh, on the estimated values, assessed values, I think they're probably referring to, one project has something, an amount designated, the other one does not, but that's not, that isn't binding anyway, is it?
No, there was a estimated value that was provided within Aftershock, um, and then I spoke with Koskovich and Murphy, and they had provided, uh, in a estimated assessed value, you know, at the end of the project. I'm not sure if either one of those numbers, or even if the construction numbers are valid anymore with the new construction costs, so like that three point eight number and that three point two, they're probably closer to four or over.
Or higher.
That.
Construction's empty, yes.
And is that timeline still befitting with the labor shortages that we have?
Yes, for us, yes.
Yeah.
Is there, there will not be a development agreement?
Yeah, we will do a development.
There is a development agreement, but, but no minimum assessed va-.
No, we don't do minimum on residential.
Right, okay. Thank you.
And there's no TIF.
And there's no what?
No TIF, there's no incentives.
But we are gonna have a completion date, I.
Yep.
Cause we ran into that, we shouldn't even be here today, quite frankly. The other guys should've had to build.
Yeah, just as we had with the first developer, we did have a development agreement. It had, it would have very similar clauses in there, and we would get the property back if it wasn't completed and such.
I think you, why can't you have a development agreement to make sure that the property tax gets spread no matter what?
We can.
Well, I think you ought to, that, if we had that last time, these would've been built and people would've been living in them. Or they would've given the property back a lot sooner than what they did.
Cause it took us a long time to get from there to here, unfortunately.
Paul, can I ask a question of you, if you come up? I, I don't wanna hold you to numbers, and I think Dan is spot on with the rent cost and everything, with those smaller units. And I don't need a number, but do you anticipate it being, not substantially, I don't know what I would say, but just lower in rent, I mean, for those smaller options? Cause that is where, where I'm, I'm telling you, that's the majority where my decision is coming from, is what's gonna be most cost effective for this community, because I hear from so many people that can't afford twelve, fourteen hundred.
Yeah, we'll be right in line with the market, like, I think our single family, our, our, our single unit would be around six fifty, six seventy-five, and the two better be somewhere between nine hundred and eleven hundred. But I mean, it's right there, like, we, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're having a strong success, and that's, we keep it right within the market.
So the six hundred and fifty square feet is not gonna be a twelve hundred dollar apartment?
Oh, gosh, no. No, we couldn't, we couldn't get that.
Right.
I know, and that's where I wanna, that's where I just want you to explicitly, us be on the same page of, no, we're not going to be, for those smaller units, won't be similar, be drastically different, so in case someone's at that price point wants to be alone, or whatever they wanna do.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you doing utilities and everything on yours like you did?
Right, right, I was gonna say, just to kinda follow up on that, the rents that we're quoting, we include high-speed internet, utilities, T- TV, water, uh, garbage, so it's kind of a compacted rent. If you looked and took that apart, it's, it is down, you know, the two bedrooms are probably more in that nine something range, and the three bedrooms are about eleven hundred or so. And then the other money is on top, cause it's basically turnkey for them, they only pay, uh, well, the ones we have now, it's about a thirty dollar a month electric bill on top of their regular rate, otherwise they get everything else included.
But the other ones are not all inclusive, but these will be?
The other ones are as well, you're right. Yeah, they're all inclusive.
Okay.
Yeah, except for electric. Yeah, and that's the plan here as well.
But these will be inclusive electric or no?
Uh, these, the plan currently was to keep them similar to the other ones, they pay their own electric bill, but everything else would be included in the, in the price of the rent, however, that kinda comes out here once we finish the, the review of it, so that'd be the plan.
Oh, is it easy for those kids to get electric?
So I think from a standpoint of number of bedrooms you're getting for each place, you're getting more bedrooms with our proposal, and I think the cost per bedroom would be more affordable, if you looked at it from that perspective, so.
You have a question, Julie?
My question just was to Alex, do you know if these students, do they have a hard time getting a Mid-American in their name? You know, when you're young and you're new?
Oh, I'm showing proof or something? No, not that I've heard at least.
Hey, what's the wishes of the council? Where, do we have to make a separate motion now that you've become the parli- parliamentarian around here? I wanna make sure I do this right today. I'm gonna show you where you're wrong, but I don't have time today. What do we have to do here?
You just need to make a motion, it has to which department you want the staff to be negotiating with.
Yeah, well, we've got a motion, that's the problem, and you've got it on the consent agenda, that, should've been on the regular agenda.
We need to reach out to which department we want them to negotiate with.
And then we have to vote on that.
Separate, roll. What's your wishes?
To keep it separate?
Huh?
We, we're, we're gonna, is some, do we have to have a motion to separate it first?
We don't, we just have to have a motion to vote up one, up or down, or vote up one of these proposals, select one developer over the other.
Select one and, and we gotta vote on it.
I move, then, I move that we work with Koskovich on this one.
There are second.
Second.
Gretchen?
They're so close.
I know what they are.
They're so close, and it's a nice problem to have, I wish we had more land. Make it available, cause we've got two quality developers, I.
What about that burnt out apartment? Have you got, any progress on that?
That land was for sale. Yeah, my understanding, it's been for sale, but I, I have not heard for sure.
Which one is that? Well, just two doors down, apartment house burnt up.
There's a lot in between them though, that's.
There's a lot in between them, where, where Dan's tying this.
I, I contacted Mr. Graff and asked him if they would wanna sell, but they were kinda still him hauling around and trying to figure out what they wanted to do with that property to the north.
Which is weird, cause they have a first sale sign and they don't pay, or didn't they?
They just listed it, I think, honestly, like two weeks ago. I talked to him about a month and a half ago.
I got you.
I did contact him as well, and he's wants a hundred fifty thousand for that lot, is where he's starting at right now, so he's gonna sit on it for a while, I said, until he gets something that he wants, so that's what he's looking at.
He's gonna sit on it for a while, wants a hundred fifty.
I think he probably will be for a bit. He did sell the adjacent property I mentioned, um, where we need to get the easements, he did sell that to Mr. Salem here last week, so we've been in contact with him to get the easements for the, uh, waterway stuff that we need as well, so it's one of the benefits, is we've been on this for so long, we have some of the pieces in place.
And Dan and, and Paul, uh, to the two developers, thank you for, you know, showing the interest in Sioux City that you are showing and that you're building, because it, it's a catch twenty-two, I mean, we wanna bring workers into Sioux City, we have to find housing for them, affordable housing, and we also have to deal with the childcare, uh, daycare, so. Um, thanks for continuing to do what you're doing. It's, it's just a difficult spot for us to be in, uh, because you're both so close, so.
And while these guys are thinking about it, I'd like to add, again, thank you so much, I've talked to you both a couple of different times on the project. Um, as far as my, you know, the decision, the choosing, uh, you both have a great vision for your, not only your own businesses, but for Sioux City as well. Um, you both completed some important projects for Sioux City, and I know that you have some in the works and you'll do more, so it's, it's close and it's really tight, and it's a very hard decision.
Yeah, and I would agree. I, I would just say that, um, my primary concern, I, I would agree first of all with Dan, that the work that you've done in the community has really made a big difference. My primary concern, knowing especially that the college is across the street, and these are young men and women who, who every dollar counts.
Right.
And we want them to get their education, so I, I want it to be affordable. I know that's a, a definition we've never reached before, it, it sounds to me like, although the units are a little smaller, uh, it sounds like something that would work well for a college student, and maybe for that matter, for someone who out of high school i- is in the trade and, and looking to move out on their own, so. That part of it, the rent really is kind of a deciding factor for me, and in terms of, uh, the quality of what I can see and what little I know, it all looks good. And, and I think that's important, so I really appreciate you getting involved in, and, and Dan, both, uh, in all that you've done to help the city out. Thank you.
Will rent requirement be part of the agreement? Is that part of the stipulation?
Well, uh, it's not right now, I don't know. Jeff?
What was the?
Well, what? I didn't hear the question, Dan.
Rent requirement, cause they mentioned, the council members had mentioned that the rent was.
Can you make sure, can come up to the microphone?
No.
Thank you, that way they can hear you on the recording.
Sorry about that. I just was asking if, if the rent requirement has kinda been the deciding factor to help persuade the vote, I would suggest that that's included in the development agreement. Cause honestly, I, in the market we have now, I don't see how you can build new and have rent at six hundred and fifty a month for an apartment. So I just would suggest that if that's been the deciding factor, you know, otherwise, you'll build it and the rent will be eight fifty or nine hundred, but then it's already done by that time, so.
It wasn't for me.
If that was the, the part of the piece of it, then.
I don't, but this is, I don't think, for me, we're gonna do that, because then we're somehow getting in the rent control business, which I don't wanna do with anybody. So for me, I wouldn't, I don't think you can do that.
Well, I don't think you can do that, but it is something that I am greatly concerned of.
Uh, Jeff?
I don't know how you enforce it. Yeah, exactly.
Exactly, but the, the primary concern for me is the affordability and being able to, uh, have a nice quality, uh, home for people to, uh, uh, rent, uh, in, as they grow into their jobs and schooling, and I, I think that would be very attractive, and I suspect that would get filled rather quickly, so.
Jeff, I would, I would ask, uh, cause I like both projects, I really do. The design, everything looks just r- really good to me. But maybe we can step up, and I know you're, this is ongoing for you, but if we could find some more land, whether it's city-owned now or related to some city facility that we have, if we could find additional land, uh, I would really like to make a really big step toward putting something together, because Dan's exactly right, or Paul, which one, whatever, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for land, we're on this deal, we're conveying the land for one dollar. And that, that makes it affordable, that makes it, that makes it happen.
And I do think we have some more things on the horizon.
Well, you've got the, so, I, I know that the library won't wanna hear this, but that piece of ground to the north of the library has no value whatsoever. We don't have playgrounds there, we don't have anything in that. And it probably would only take one of your buildings, I would guess, but it doesn't make sense to have this city property around that we just go mow.
Where that staff parking is back there, is that what you're talking about?
There's still a lot of grass back there.
Is there?
Yeah, and other than being used for the carnival once a year, it never gets anything but a bill from the city to get mowed or the taxpayers, because they, of course, the library's not gonna pay for that. So to me, that piece of ground, it's right in the neighborhood where there's lots of apartments, so nobody can say you're putting an apartment on top of this. And it, and maybe it would handle one building of this size and still have adequate parking. And I'm only speaking for myself, but that could go tomorrow if it meant one of these type of buildings going up there.
So if you'd please look at that for us and, and let us know what you find out.
Will do.
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
On the motion, Gretchen?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
Shaner?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Waters?
Well, I think I'm gonna vote no. I'm glad it's passing, and I'll explain why. I think with the idea that rent is either way, right, like, I, I'm not sure what you'll charge, the only then reason that I would say no and lean, um, towards Dan, I guess, would've just been because of the thought already of pushing it towards Morningside Avenue, um, and just with that thinking of the neighbors. So I would just urge Koskovich or Mur- Murphy, both of you guys, to just try to incorporate that, cause now you're going forward, which I'm excited about either way. But I would just ask you again, just really try to do that. As someone that almost bought one of those townhomes, I would just want the developer to think about that, so, no, thank you.
Uh, fourteen's purchasing A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Balkan Industries to replace the rotary drum thickener unit at the wastewater treatment plant. B is a resolution canceling the purchase order issued to Kneppeler Chevrolet for a cargo van and rescinding resolution twenty twenty dash zero eight nine five. C is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Hockenburg's Equipment Supply for a Hobart electric dishwasher. Is Sparrow here? Ask Sparrow how come the Hobart on Highway twenty didn't bid this? We have a Hobart dealer right out there.
We do, on the way to Bronson.
Yeah, exactly.
What number is this?
Fourteen.
Jessica Johnson, City Manager's Office. Um, uh, Sparrow did mention this, and he said that he believes they're just a service station, like, they don't sell out of there.
Well, I don't, I don't think that.
But I'm not sure, I can check with Sparrow.
I don't think that's correct, because I've, I've seen him unload equipment for locker plants.
I think I bought two fryers from them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure why they didn't, but we did talk to him, cause they're planning on doing the install.
Okay.
Oh, well, maybe they have the business model.
So they had the opportunity if they wanted to.
They could've changed your business model over the last couple of years as well.
So I'm not sure, but they knew about it, cause they're installing it.
Fourteen E?
Fourteen C.
Fourteen C.
E is a resolution awarding a purchase order utility equipment company for fire hydrants. E is American Underground, a resolution awarding a purchase order to American Underground for couplings. Two is a resolution awarding a purchase order to American Underground for valves. Fifteen are applications for beer, liquor license, see the list and come four if you have questions. Sixteen, receipt of minutes, see the list, come four if you have questions. Before we vote, I don't, I do not agree with city attorney, which wouldn't be the first time, but I'll ask five to be pulled in a separate roll call to be voted on.
Five?
Number five.
We, I have. Back on fourteen for a minute, just briefly, they said they sent, uh, I don't know, a number of bid invitations out.
On what set?
I think on fourteen C that you mentioned.
Yeah, I'm sure they did, but I'm just asking why the local guy didn't bid, did we call and ask, is what I'm asking.
Is there a Hobart dealer?
Yeah, fourteen, yeah, but invitations to bid were sent to fourteen vendors and two.
I understand that, I'm just asking, did they contact the local Hobart distributor and ask why they didn't bid?
Okay, all right, I got it.
Which one are we separating, Mayor?
Number five.
Moore?
This is to rescind, right?
Yes.
Hi.
Shaner?
Hi.
Scott?
Steen.
Waters?
Hi.
Gretchen?
Hi.
Now on the consent agenda, how are we voting?
Electronically. Should be available now.
No. I'll have a discussion later and. Not saying that, that's not right, I'm saying it's not ha- happened that way for nine years.
Mr. Gretchen, I'm just waiting on yours.
Oh, I was waiting for you to call my name, cause I, you know, it's getting shorter, so I wanna hear it as much as I. Sorry.
Again, keeping in mind.
You mean the time is getting shorter?
Is time remaining?
I thought she was gonna go around, I just.
Soccer game, let's kinda keep that in mind, okay? Passes five zero.
Seventeen, a hearing and resolution assessing a five hundred dollar civil penalty against Save-A-Lot for violation of the beer, wine, and liquor laws. I'll, I'll move that.
Second.
The hearing is open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
And even though they paid, paid the fine, we still gotta read that, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, I understood, so.
Passes five zero. Eighteen's a hearing resolution assessing a five hundred dollar civil penalty against Milwaukee Wiener Shop for violation of beer, wine, and liquor laws. I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing's now open, anyone to be heard? Hearing is now closed. Passes five zero. Nineteen's a resolution approving a first amendment to the amended and restated solid waste collection, recycling, and disposal agreement for Gil Hall, Halling to clarify the definition of holiday, holidays. I'll move that. Second. Passes five zero. Twenty is a resolution approving a one-year extension of the solid waste collection, recycling, disposal agreement with Gil Halling. I'd like to move a one-week deferral on this, I'll tell you why.
Okay, second.
You're gonna keep us in suspense until we...
No, no, I'll tell you why. I'll tell you why. Because if you're a small guy, I've had people call me on this, and you do a little home remodeling, and you've got a small dump trailer, you now have to drive all the way to Jackson, and you've got to dump out there. They won't let you dump like they used to.
At our dump?
And they haul it out there. Well, you talk about a waste of gas, they haul it out in a big semi, but instead we got twenty-five little guys driving out there dumping in Jackson.
And it takes away the convenience of having our own.
And it takes away for the convenience, why do we even have a, why do we have that? It's just for you and I at our...
Right, but normally they would dump it here and then Gil would haul it out there.
Yeah.
Right?
But they, but these new owners switched that. And they kind of did it without the council knowing about it.
Roger Benson, Environmental Services. I happen to be on both sides of this, at one time working for Gil and now on this side. Majority of that concern was the size of the trailers. It's not that there's certain sized dump trailers that, that could be serviced there. They keep getting larger and there's potential for damages to the trailers. And so, that is kind of what the concern was with having the larger trailer.
Well, I understand that, but if they're dumping sheet rock and two-by-fours, that trailer's got it. I mean, I understand if you're dumping concrete, I get that. But most guys that are doing remodeling don't dump concrete because they can take it somewhere and recycle it and they don't have to pay a landfill fee. So, what's the difference if I got a small non-dump trailer and I go out there and hand unload it because I said it came from my house? But if this, you know, I've had three people that remodel houses, I, we, we hire roll-offs, so I don't care. But it's not for me, but for these smaller guys that, they gotta drive all the way to Jackson and maybe, you know, maybe they gotta do it twice a week.
Right, to my knowledge, it's not all the dump trailers.
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay.
Pretty much.
I can continue.
Until we get it clarified, I'd like to hold on their contract renewal personally.
I was gonna say, that's what he's asking for a deferral then, is if we can get clarification from them.
Because it's a lot different than when Leonard ran it. I think you would agree with that.
Uh, yeah, it actually, actually switched over when Leonard was, was still overseeing.
Right at the end, right?
Yeah, it was at the end.
Right when these guys were negotiating.
Well, is it the size of the load, the weight of trailer, the contents, or the content of...
Trailer.
Right.
Uh, because a lot of those dump trailers have gates that open. And if they can't pin them back, then they're wider than the bay that they can dump in. And they can't get close enough. And, and as they dump, it catches either on the curb or it could damage their, their trailer. And that's what we, we don't want is the liability.
Well, I understand that, but you don't let a dump trailer dump on the inside anyway. They've always had to dump on the backside, on that open pit with the, with the trailer down. Or they have never been able to dump a dump trailer in under the roof.
And they, they have...
So, the garage door has...
The smaller ones.
Well, I mean, they'd have to be awful small because you, you don't have enough head height with that garage door to do that. I guarantee you, I, we own a dump trailer, I never use it anymore. But anytime I ever used that, I had to go out back and dump in, in that open pit. There's no way they'd let me dump in that.
Well, it sounds like we need to really get some clarification.
If we just get some clarification, yeah, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On the deferral.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
You said just one week, right?
Yeah.
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Twenty-one, I've moved to, 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 um, well, we can do first reading. Twenty-one, ordinance mending chapter five point two zero, solid waste in the municipal code to clarify language pertaining to holiday collection and to increase the fees to coincide with the current solid waste agreement. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes five zero. Twenty-two is a motion authorizing parks and rec departments to solicit requests for proposals for the management of Green Valley and Floyd Golf Courses. I'll move that.
Second.
And I'm, I'm gonna be very upfront, I own part of Whispering Creek, but if you guys have been around here, these guys told me I don't have a conflict, they're the ones that said I don't have a conflict. And I don't have a conflict, I hope they're the successful bidder, quite frankly. But I just, I was here when we set this thing up some thirty years ago and that, and we'd never asked for proposals. And I think it, personally, I think it's time, so.
I think that there'll probably be quite a few people who may be interested in it.
Well, yeah, I don't know that.
It's not a glorious business anymore.
I mean, you're, we'll have to weigh that because just because somebody's interested...
Doesn't mean they qualify.
I think they need to raise their fees, quite frankly, but the other side of the coin is you can't raise them so much that you become uncompetitive for the average taxpayer either. So, there is a balancing act, even if somebody comes in at the end of the day and offers a lot of money, you've got to somehow ask them, we gotta know what their fees are gonna be. It's different than asking a guy what a rent is.
And it's, it's so difficult to make a profitable business out of a golf course in...
Really, you think? I got some... If you need a tax write-off, I'm your guy.
The only question I had was just, um, I was trying to recall if we had any conversation about this coming up, and I think Pete had mentioned that it was brought up in the meeting, um, just so. I never want a board blindsided that, or anyone blindsided that we were sending out an RFP and just that we did our due diligence about at least talking to them about that or the possibility of that. Would you say that that's...
He did.
Yeah, I did talk to him. I went to the meeting last Thursday and, and laid out a timeline for him and, and told him what the concern was. And it had really nothing, well, it wasn't exclusive to just the golf nonprofit, that the city's, uh, one of their big challenges we have is the fiscal responsibility. And, and, and it would be just inappropriate not for us to want to look to see what's out there, especially after a period of time of thirty-plus years. But, but that didn't preclude them from bidding and, and...
And looking at the proposals, exactly.
Right.
Like, like we did with...
And certainly the advantage they have, I think, really, is that they have thirty years of experience. I don't know what anybody else will bring to the table, don't know any of them. Uh, but, but I do, and I, I had maybe one board member, at least one, who wasn't very happy when I said, well, he said, what would you think, they're gonna pass this thing? And I said, yeah, I think it'll probably be unanimous so we can see what's out there. And they, they said, well...
It's not because we dislike their performance, so we don't want to prove it, absolutely isn't.
He said it would just be inappropriate for us not to take a look to see what's available and what it, you know, and that still gives them the opportunity to bid. I don't know what's there and what's not, but I do think it's a good idea that we find out.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Yeah, and they know about it. And we're given the opportunity, I reminded them to come here. But unfortunately, no one was available off the board to come here on Monday. But I do think the last notice I heard was that they may be here next Monday to...
And maybe send us some emails.
Yes.
Excuse me, to the, to the mayor's point made earlier, Matt, I, I can't find it now in your, your write-up, but how long ha- has been quite a while, hasn't it, since we've looked?
I wasn't even the mayor, I was a councilmember, I'm the guy that helped.
Yeah, but I thought, Matt, I thought you had a date in here, a year...
It was like eighty-eight, wasn't it?
Or eighty-six, but I can't find it.
Matt Salvo, Department of Environmental Recreation Director, is mid-eighties when...
Yeah, I...
No, it wasn't the mid-eighties because I didn't get elected till eighty-six, and I can tell you, it came after that.
Okay.
Yeah, Dan, I read...
There was a group out of New York that came in and wanted, offered us all kinds of money. And Walt Cokejohn, Larry Franzen, Irv Sorensen, there was a, a... Dick, Dick the insurance guy that used to be up in the Benson Building, Eckert, Eckert? Yeah. And, yeah, that's, anyway, they came with this proposal, I remember it well. And, and we decided, again, we were fearful that the fees would go up too much with that New York proposal, but that we were not very good in the golf business, let's just be realistic. We didn't run it very well, we didn't have good cash controls, we just didn't have a lot of things right. And so, we needed somebody outside of the city government to oversee it. And that's how it got, but I think it was, I think, I don't think it was my first year on the council.
Yeah, prior to two thousand twelve, I couldn't find a whole lot of information.
Yeah.
This contract, current contract dates back to two thousand twelve.
Unfortunately, most of those guys have passed on now.
I tend to agree with the, the mayor, I, I keep telling everybody eighty-seven, some have told me eighty-eight, but it's one of the two years that they started.
It's been over thirty years, let's just say that, it's been easy. And they've done a great job.
I thought I read too, Dan, I can't remember and I can't find it. That there is, uh, some reference to the eighties, but I don't, I don't know where I got that. But, but it's, it started in the late eighties.
Well, Pete, thanks for discussing that with the board then and giving them a heads up because that, that is important.
Yes.
They're not blindsided.
Right.
We want them to know it, and sure, I mean, I, I'd be upset too, you know, but they've done a good job, so bring to the table what they've been doing, it's, it's worked.
I think you're absolutely right, you're right. Um, the RFP comes out then October first. Okay, will, will that be accessible so we can take a look? Because I'm, I'm curious about how you factor in, um, their experience. Are they gonna hire and fire everybody? Are they gonna run food and beverage just to, everything that, is that all included in the RFP?
Correct, we'd have two models in the RFP, one model for leasing and a model just for management.
Okay.
We have a draft of the RFP available and we'd be happy to share that with the council if you're interested in seeing it.
Please.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Passes five zero. Citizen concerns, any citizen to be heard? Seeing none, council? No, sir.
I don't have any concerns, I just want to say that I'm very pleased that the housing, the apartment complex, the negotiation for the project is gonna get started. Housing is in short supply, the council is very, very aware of that. We're doing everything that we can to entice developers to come to our city and the developers that are here. And I, I, I think there's gonna be more projects coming, in fact, I know there are, so I look forward to working on them. I think there's not one of us who doesn't pledge that when we're running for council. And affordable housing, there's a lot of questions about affordable housing. What is affordable housing? And affordable housing, to me, the definition is not a price. It's having some inventory available to everyone at their different lifestyle and their different time of their life. So, when I get out of high school or college, an entry-level home, when I, you know, get a life partner, maybe the next stage, and the next stage, we can't go from an eighty thousand dollar bungalow to a four hundred thousand dollar house in a luxury neighborhood. So, just having something available at all stages, to me, is affordable housing, just to have many levels. And that's what we're really working towards, so I just want everybody to know that.
Alley.
I can't disappoint you, Mayor, I gotta have a few things. Um, one thing I just wanted to talk about, and I'm glad, Dave, you're still here. I think this conversation has been had before, but if you can just humor me and maybe check it out at some point in time or ask someone. Um, the alley art festival, we passed a resolution to be able to close those alleys for that. And if the council hasn't checked that out or went down to that, I would really encourage them to do so. It's impressive artwork that's going on in those alleys. And I think Downtown Partners and other community leaders have really invested some dollars, and I think we have some to a degree as well, um, as far as sponsorships. But I know Downtown Partners and others have put a lot of work and effort into it, as have the artists. My question is just if we could do our part of two things. Number one, if there's any way to try to level out those alleys, um, I know you can't overlay that area or anything like that, but some of them get pretty darn rough going through those areas because there are so many more people walking through those. If they were, we could just make them more passable. Um, then the other question would be if the council or at any point, we could look into what my suggestion was, and I think I said it to Downtown Partners, was just some type of lighting. You know, I think some type of lighting, because of, the tricky part about the alleys chosen is they're all covered. So, it's actually darker during the day and harder to see the artwork, and it's a little easier at night. But I just would really love to look into the council getting involved if it's possible or however we could do that to bring more attention. I've also talked about neon signs directing visitors into those areas so they can check out the artwork. But I just think, I want to make sure that we're promoting and encouraging visitors to be able to experience that too because I think it's a cool part of our community. Um, the other thing that I wanted to bring to, and so, Dave, just let me know if there's anything you think that could be done or if not, I understand.
Is it pothole-ish more type?
Well, it's just very uneven would be the word I would use, yeah.
Last time I was down there, right?
Yeah, I'm, I try to roll through and it's pretty chatty.
And to add to that lighting comment, being on the board with you at Downtown Partners, is that safety issue, that those alleys are covered and it's quite dark? And, you know, we're working on our lighting projects, but that would be nice if we could figure out something specifically for those.
Yeah, I agree, just to make people feel safe as they go through them.
Walkability?
The second thing that I would say is I hope that everyone has seen the wayfinding in downtown because I'm pretty pumped about that, um, to see them finally come to fruition. It's been a long time coming, um, and so, I know that there are a lot of people on various boards and positions that are probably excited to have this behind, behind them. Uh, but I think they look great and hopefully are directing more people around our community. And the last thing I would say, and I think I've just lost Dave, oh, no, Dave's here, is I did reach out to the roads crew to have them patch an area that a business had contacted me that it's, had been a point of frustration and they jumped right on it and were able to get that fixed. I forwarded an email of them thanking me profusely, but I just wanted to bring that to the rest of the council that our team is out there working quick, so we appreciate it. That's all I have, Mayor.
Dan? Looking forward to the Mayor's Youth Commission activities this evening, starting at seven o'clock at Long Lines and the Young Ambassadors Program where they bring the students in. It's always exciting, it's, and it's just, I'll tell you what, it just really gives me a lot of hope and encouragement and a lot of energy, so I'm looking forward to that tonight at seven o'clock. I will see, hopefully, all of you there. That's all I have, Mayor.
I move adjourned.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore? Shaner?
Aye.
Aye.
Did I hear Moore's? Sorry.
No, aye.
He's looking over here and she's saying Moore. I was confused just for a second.